All right. Oh, yeah, good one.
I'm recording in stereo.
Okay, good. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome to the November eighteenth Board of Supervisors Business Meeting and Public Hearing. We will do a roll call for purposes of minutes preparation. I'm here. John Cole is here. Mike Kaufman is here. Scott Holbert is here. Kurt Jenner and Judith Dankour, Township Engineer. The Board of Supervisors held executive sessions regarding personnel litigation and real estate on October ninth, October sixteenth, October twenty-third, October twenty-seventh, October thirtieth, eleven-sixth, and eleven-thirteenth. We also held a pre-construction meeting on October seventeenth at nine AM and a special budget meeting on November tenth. We will, we're now into B on the agenda, public hearings. We'll start with consideration of the agricultural security application for three thirty-six East Dark Hollow Road, TMP number four-four dash zero-two-two dash zero-zero-one, which was advertised on November ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and posted on the website. Scott?
Yes. That basically had everything I was going to say. The application is from Tierney Land Management LLC. I would add, though, that this it's been reviewed by both your planning commission and the Bucks County Planning Commission. Both found this is a property that is prime to be put into the agricultural security area. So that's the only thing I would add, that it has been reviewed in accordance with the law and both received favorable recommendations.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we add to the agricultural security area, TMP number forty-four dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-one.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two for public hearings is the consider, consideration to adopt ordinance number two seventy-eight of the Township of Tinicum, amending ordinance number two thirty-eight, providing for an exemption for certain construction projects.
Yeah, this is just something, obviously, with the township growing, some projects coming up, as well as the bridge project. This is something that's common in other ordinances throughout Commonwealth that you, as the enforcement agency, and understand that you have your projects, you can't really enforce your own laws against yourself in the sense that, you know, you, the township can't cite itself, but it is common to know that, you know, our goal was to follow our laws, be available. So this is something that's done everywhere else, so it's not a problem to do here as well.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance two seventy-eight.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
We are at our first round of public comment. Is there any? Welcome.
Yeah, Catherine Arubox in a rug. And I'll be brief because I want to get home to watch Ken Burns's installment of the American Revolution, which probably involves the crossing of the Delaware tonight. And part of what I'm speaking tonight are just asking the board to consider, as you consider your budget, including a donation of some sort to the group that's working on the America Two-Fifty Heritage Day in May, which is only six months away. And so we have outreach to a number of people. We've gotten some nice donations. But it's going to be a lot to pull together. We've got a lot of to secure, the demonstrate, the dancers, the music, the reenactors, those folks who usually come with a price tag, and some make some of the exhibits professional looking and everything else. Amy Hollander is really heading up a lot of the contact of that outreach to different organizations, and she's been working or contacted the schools as well, and they're very enthusiastic to be participating, so it can be a really special event. If we don't see anything tonight on Ken Burns's thing about Tinicum, it's because we haven't been blowing our horn about it. We haven't been sharing enough, and we want to make sure, just as those folks who hundred-and-fifty years ago took their little piecemeal actions all together, not almost for themselves, but knowing that it was going to be setting up something for the future, that they had no clue what it was going to be like. And I think Ken Burns, when he speaks about the revolution, really kind of gets choked up because it is, it would never happen in this history of civilization. And our way of government and the idea of it was so new and radical and, and things, and those folks were doing it for the future. And so I would hope that the Tinicum can take the lead in helping to sponsor this with something in the budget to help us secure all the, the components so that it's not April thirtieth, that we've got two weeks ago.
Have a specific dollar amount you're asking for?
Well, the, the whole program ranges from ten to twenty thousand dollars depending on, you know, how many inclusions of things, but we do have hard costs that are at least ten thousand dollars. And we've gotten several thousand in commitments or contributions, so anything to bring that, those two numbers together is, is very much appreciated. And I'm not a good money person, so I can't say exactly. But, but certainly it will show in that way. It, it's happening in Tinicum. And we're including Durham, we're including Bridgeton, Nakamixin, Plumstead, Haycock, Bedminster, Springfield Township, but it's happening here, and a lot of things did happen here, so it's really nice if Tinicum can have their stamp on it as, as a a general. Let me see here, we've got the classification categories. But I'll, I'll leave these with you, and then if you want to post it on the board, I'm pretty sure these are the up-to-date ones. This discusses being a partner, which is just signing up as a smaller donation for, for a partner. And this is describing the the event. And so the different categories of general, colonel, major, captain, and private.
Okay.
And major general, you want to go above five thousand.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
There we go. Any additional public comment? Hearing none. Next up, we have the report from our police chief.
Evening, everyone. Tinicum Township Police Department reported three hundred and three incident reports in October. Fifty-five were service, eighty-six were criminal or investigative, including one burglary report, one fraud report, and one drug violation. Hundred-and-forty-eight, three were for traffic, and nineteen were for training or court hearings. We had two reportable traffic accidents in October. A single vehicle crash on Caperty Road was due to distracted driving, and a tractor trailer struck the Golden Pheasant Bridge, resulting in disabling damage. We've averaged three point two reportable crashes for October over the last five years. Fifteen truck details were conducted on River Road in October. One driver was cited for an overweight violation after striking the bridge in the overnight hours, and one driver was cited for the length restriction. Last month, we had coffee with a cop at Fieldstone Coffee Roasters, and Officer Fleishman read to the kindergarten class at Tinicum Elementary. We also participated in the fall drug takeback at Waring's, where eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-one pounds of medications were collected throughout Bucks County, and one thousand thirty-four pounds of sharps were also collected throughout the county. Officer Barrington and I attended the trunk-or-treat event at the Tinicum Township Community Park, and I think there's some pictures of us in our Wild West trunk hang up here in the township office. Tinicum Township Police Department is proud to announce its participation in the Bucks County Blue Envelope Program, a countywide initiative designed to improve communication and understanding between law enforcement officers and individuals with autism spectrum disorder, intellectual disabilities, or other communication challenges. Drivers participating in the voluntary program carry a distinct blue envelope where they store their essential documents, license, registration, insurance, and the envelope is also includes a contact card for trusted individual who can provide assistance if needed. The exterior of the envelope features vital cues, often indicating if the driver is verbal or non-verbal, along with clear, succinct instructions for both the officer and the driver. It also alerts the officer that the driver may have sensory sensitivities or communication difficulties, guiding the officer to use clear, simple language and allow for extra time in responses. This simple yet highly effective measure reduces anxiety for the driver, promotes patience and empathy from the officer, and helps de-escalate potentially stressful situations, leading to safer outcomes for everyone involved. The program represents our commitment to inclusivity and awareness on our roads. Residents can pick up their envelopes at the police department, and I've already brought some up here to the township building as well. And this is what they look like, and these were given to us by the Bucks County District Attorney's Office.
Okay. I had never heard of that program until I read about it in your monthly report. It seems like a great idea. Any questions from the chief? All right. Thank you so much. Next, we have our manager's report.
Good evening. Our 2026 budget was advertised and posted on the Township Bulletin Board and on our website for review, so if anyone is interested in perusing the budget, please do so. This will be on our December second agenda for adoption. A couple of announcements. Be sure to join the EAC's Marty Kaid, Ph.D., for her Everything You Always Wanted to Know About Mushrooms lecture at seven thirty PM. That's Wednesday, November nineteenth, here in the Tinicum Municipal Building, and admission is free. A giant thank you to the Parks and Recreation Committee and all the volunteers, our police department, the fire companies, and so forth, who helped to make the trunk-or-treat event successful. Thank you to Parks and Recreation for organizing a donated evergreen tree to the, to be the centerpiece for the first annual holiday tree lighting, which will be on Friday, December fifth, from four PM to six PM, which is a new time. Please look at our website for these items because we did have a flyer up that had notated a different time, and they're changing that time, thinking since it's darker out earlier, they'd like to try to do it earlier. So please make sure to, to look at these times and confirm those times. It is seven to nine now?
Between day and night.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I, I was wondering, because I saw a new time, and I thought, oh, again, it got changed, so that's why. That's why I'm saying, please, please, please watch and look at our website, because they do change the time sometimes, and we want to make sure that everyone is there. And all ages are welcome. A giant, another giant thank you to James and Pam Haines of Rendezvous Farms LLC for a thousand dollar donation for the headquarters' road bridge fund. We thank them very much. Also, thank you to the contributors of the Police Foundation. They had purchased a sound detection meter reader and also sent some of our officers to meter reader training. A giant thank you to them also. We have a lot of thank yous. We're very, very, very fortunate, very, very lucky to have the good people that we do, helping us. Excuse me. Just a little FYI, the Board of Supervisors will have their organizational meeting on Monday, January twenty-twenty-six this year at seven PM, and then the business meeting will immediately follow. Normally, our meetings are on Tuesday, so I'm letting everybody know ahead of time that we'll be meeting on a Monday. The elected Board of Auditors meeting will be on Tuesday, January sixth, so not to confuse things, the very next day, they'll be here also at four PM for their meeting. Excuse me. We have a lot of openings yet on our Township Committee, so I encourage everyone to please, please apply. The application is on our website, so we're always happy to get applications, and we'll be holding those applications for the Board of Supervisors because of the new year taking place. So we do have some people who have already put in applications, but we're hanging on to them because with the new year, some of the terms could be different and so forth. So we've been discussing possibly changing the terms on some of the committees to try to make them longer, so people don't have to apply every single year, because some of the committees are, are the terms are only one year. So this would really be helpful to provide a longer for these committees. So again, please, please.
And then a reminder, those who are on committees and their terms expiring, if they want to continue to, they also have to apply.
Thank you, John. Yes, yes. So I think some people believe that, you know, if their term is, if they're already on a board, that if their term expires, that they automatically renew, and that's not the case. You will have to fill out an application and present it to us, so we can present it to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for that, John. Because I know that's been something that we're, we're experiencing. The other item is, we're currently writing grants for an F-seven-fifty dump truck with a salt spreader and plow, and that's for two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars, and more municipal building renovations for a million dollars. We're still waiting to hear about our grant application that we submitted last year. We're hoping that shortly, now that the government has opened and the budgets have been opened, that we hear something soon regarding that application. We're also working on the FEMA closeout IDA grant, and we're working on all of the new items that we do have coming up for the new year. The other, other items that I wanted to just touch upon quickly was the public works. We've been acquiring millings and placing them at the quarry. We've been getting the millings from Pendot, and they're working on the Dark Hollow Road project. And so our, our public works department has been working with them, and by taking those millings, what we're going to be doing is utilizing them on certain roadway systems, potholes, and so forth. It works very well. We, we used them on one of the roadway systems last year. It worked very well. So we're proud to announce that we're rekindling a relationship with Pendot, and they are helping us with this, which is going to save us quite a bit of money by having these millings. So I'd like to just announce that also for our public works department. They've been very busy with pushing millings for now. And the other item that I'd like to talk about is we just hit over two-hundred-and-forty-seven permits. So that is a lot of permits here in Tinicum. So I wanted to just let everybody know, it's been a very, very busy year.
Those aren't all for houses, though.
Uh, no.
People get a little bit nervous out there here with too many houses.
No, 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 no. This is, this can range from, you know, wells, sewage management, replacement of oil tank, additional bathrooms, pole barn. You know, we, we will be providing the list to the Board of Supervisors in the drop on Friday.
Yes, that's great. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for Judith?
No. Okay.
Kurt?
Yes, trying to keep it short. I have a memorandum dated November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five in your packet. I'll just hit on some of the, the bold items where there's been some recent activity or items to report. The first one in this list is the Spinio Track Land Development on one thirteen. This office's understanding is that there was a conditional approval back in October, two thousand and twenty-two, and there was a letter from Steve Harris outlining the conditions of approval, November third, two thousand and twenty-two. Recently, there's been some revisions or resubmissions for the proof plan to try to demonstrate compliance with that prior version of the plan. So this office drafted a review letter. We had the applicant provide details of the water quality management permit, which is their sewage treatment system for the project. So we, we reviewed those where the absorption area was similar. They clarified their revisions to to the system, and it was mostly filtration devices, I believe, within the system. So we, we did a letter on that dated November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, but there's still outstanding conditions of approval that would have to be met and reviewed by the legal department as well, because agreements would need to be prepared and other items before the plans get executed and recorded.
Kurt, you said the, the septic systems you're talking about there, right?
Correct. There was a special water quality management permit from DEP on their style of septic system.
So then trying to remember, they had a, like a micro system, right? Micro-m净 system? Is that what they were doing, through the woods, or some sort of weird system they were doing?
It was a specialized type of system, which, which gets reviewed by DEP instead of the Health Department.
Now, they, when they got this approved, and when we looked at that, at the planning commission, it was a warehouse situation, and it switched to industrial park the week between we approved it and then they got it before the board. Did they make changes and the septic system? Because there might be different members of people there as opposed to warehouses? Because when we sat there and figured it out with them, it was like, well, there's, we, we anticipate this many people working in a warehouse, but that may change with an industrial park. Are they, did they change that, or is that status?
I don't believe the capacity or any of the calculations changed. I think it was just the filtration in there. So we provided the, the summary of changes and the permit, and I guess the approval conditions spelled out certain uses that were allowed and not allowed. So that's where it would need a final, a final review to verify that everything meets the
Huge issue to the planning commission, because we were, you know, we did not feel like we reviewed it properly for industrial park. And if the board passed it anyway, not unanimously.
Unanimately, one or?
Yeah.
No, but they should have gone back to the planning commission, in our opinion, to make sure that these kind of calculations were done correctly.
So that's
But this is where we are. We're sort of stuck with whatever they
We reviewed it versus the approval conditions that were spelled out in the Harris letter.
Okay.
And this predated me, the, yeah, the B.C.
Predated me to it.
Yeah.
Here.
Two thousand and twenty-two, B.C.
This is what caused me to try to get up here, this particular project. All right. Yes. Okay, sorry, I'm in the detracting from.
No, that's fine. The next item I was going to report an update on was the Cruiser Track subdivision, two-lot subdivision, Bunker Hill and Beaver Hill Road, or Beaver Run Roads. So a conditionally used subdivision was conditionally approved at the July first, two thousand and twenty-five supervisors' meeting. They had since obtained a Component One Planning Module approval from DEP dated November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. They still have to address any outstanding conditions of approval before that ultimately goes anywhere. The next item is the Koenig Track subdivision. That one, we have a, this is two lots at four-seventy-nine Headquarters Road. We have a extension granted through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five on a prior application that is awaiting decision. However, the applicant indicated they're going to revise the submission to address the comments. But we have not received that submission yet, so we are going to need an additional extension with any new submission, otherwise we'll have to act on that. So I, I bolted that item, and I'll plan to follow up with their engineer. And the next item is part of the truck studies. So we did complete a draft truck analysis for Headquarters Road. It's going to be discussed with the township, and it's going to be for consideration with LTAP and Pendot onto how to potentially restrict the road from large vehicles that can't navigate the turns in the roadway system. And last but not least is the update on Headquarters Road Bridge Project. So that, we did have a groundbreaking meeting on that. It got published in Bucks County Herald. The contractor's been proceeding with work on that project, dismantling the old structure. They're making some pretty good headway, and they're, they're pretty much on schedule. They provided a schedule to the township, and they're moving ahead on that. That is all the updates that I have.
Sounds good. Any questions or comments for? Kurt, yes, Kathy.
Yeah, Catherine Arubox in a rug. Kurt, was there any indication, because you mentioned a DEP permit for the Spinio Track on one thirteen? Had they done any, did that have to go through any review at the state level for from the Pennsylvania Historic Museum Commission for Archaeology? Because
I don't recall up and. Yeah.
Site has historically had great yields of particularly Native American artifacts and
Yeah, I believe the only thing, this, I believe the only thing
So it's hard. Go ahead.
I believe the only thing in the revision was pertaining to the filtration system, and they're using the same absorption area where the system would actually go is what was on the original plan and permit.
Right, right, but like, because it's now like the state agency reviewing, and I didn't know if
Yeah, it was Yeah, I don't recall who they, what their process is on their end.
Right. Is there a way to investigate how that can be protected?
We can follow up on that, Kathy.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Did you have something for Kurt?
No.
No, okay. And next, we have Scott, our solicitor's report.
Reese, I've got nothing for you tonight.
Okay, great. Next is our consent agenda. First, we have Board of Supervisors monthly business meeting minutes from October seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and from the special budget meeting minutes. And the special budget meeting minutes from November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Two is the treasures report for October, two thousand and twenty-five. Three is the payroll report for September and October, two thousand and twenty-five, in the amount of, well, September into October, in the amount of eighty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Disbursements for October, two thousand and twenty-five from the general fund in the amount of one thirty-two, eight, ten, and ninety-one cents from the state fund, three thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifteen cents, and from the escrow fund, five thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and forty-two cents. Number five is consideration to authorize the fire police assistance from the Tinicum Township Fire Companies for the Holiday Tree Lighting Event at the Tinicum Township Community Park on December fifth, from seven to nine PM, if they are available, the rain date being twelve-seven from four to six PM. Note the new time for the rain date. Melissa, is this the correct time for the rain date? Yes, it is. And number six is Loftus Construction, Inc., the contractors, the application for payment number one in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents pertaining to the Headquarters Road Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion. All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, Mike makes the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have action items. First is consideration to ask our solicitor to create and advertise Term Limitations Ordinance for the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Yeah, just in some discussions, we're looking to, I believe, lower the number of members, because they're having trouble filling it, as well as, it was lessen the term for this one, correct? Yeah. Lessen the terms, just because to make sure we have people who will be willing to serve, and they can have a quorum, so they can actually have their committee, committee meetings and do their work.
Is there a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two is consideration to ask our solicitor to review and draft an amendment to the ordinance regarding the removal of an amendment to our zoning ordinance regarding the removal of section nine hundred dot twelve accessory building in front yards, that's in quotations, that reads, quote, "Accessory buildings shall not be permitted within required front yards," end quote, and renumber the following sections accordingly based on the Planning Commission's recommendations from their September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes.
First off, I don't think we can do this. The, the required front yard is that area between the middle of the road and the ultimate right-of-way, which is the future right-of-way of roads. Best example to look at is six-eleven. I don't know what the current right-of-way is. It's either sixty or eighty feet, I'm not sure, but it's current legal right-of-way, but there's a future right-of-way that is a hundred and twenty feet. So from the middle of six-eleven, sixty feet inside the property on six-eleven, that's the required front yard. And the ordinance reads that way. It says that, so to allow for future highway expansion and construction unimpeded. You mean that we don't want to allow buildings to be built there, because then the, the state would have to go through the whole eminent domain and reimbursement for the buildings and so forth, which they may not do, because it was built or really shouldn't build it in their right-of-way. So we can't do what they're asking us to do. I think that the title of the section could be, say, accessory buildings in required front yards, as opposed to front yards. I think that's part of the problem there. They're confusing what a front yard is, because in the same ordinance, it reads What a front yard is because in the same ordinance, it reads that um, the front yard. Is from the road edge to the corner of the first building. And that's intended to just orientate, orient, orient you so that you, when you come out your front door, if your, if your house doesn't happen to face the road. You don't consider the front yard to be outside your front door. It's actually from the side of your house to the road. And that's, that's what they're trying to do. And then within that front yard area is the required front yard. And then there's also the added to that, the front yard setback. So if you're on six eleven, you take the sixty feet from the middle of the road plus fifty feet setback and a hundred and ten feet from the middle of six eleven is where you can begin to build. Now, there's nothing in the ordinance saying where you can build what. There's no rules of. Where the buildings are to be placed or what buildings to be placed where. And this was there, what brought the discussion up is they're talking about accessory dwelling units and where to put them on the property. And they ran into a, 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 this, this thing where you can't build anything in the front yard. And they're like, well, what if the place to build something is in front of the house that's already there? But that's where they started to get objections to the, to the ordinance. So we can't really do what Mr. Sullivan is recommending we do because it puts buildings into the required front yard where. Uh, you know, if they build six eleven to four lanes, they're going to plow your house down. That's what they're trying to avoid. So that's what that ordinance is for. And there's various distances depending on what classification road you're on. So I think we need to fix that a little bit. Maybe, and then also our front yard definition is kind of awkward to me. I, I. It kind of almost said that the required front yard is actually the front yard and that's again where we're starting to run into where they want to be able to put. Buildings in the front yard. As it's described from the house to the road. And um, so to me, our ordinance is the way they're laid out and read now, you can build. Anywhere from the setback, the front yard setback. Onto your property in any order that you want. You know, you can put a garage in front of your house, for instance, a pole barn in front of your house. That, 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 that's not restricted in our ordinances. So I think that's what they're worried about is that you can't. If you build a house a thousand feet off the road, you can't build anything from that house all the way to the road. That's, that's what they're interpreting this to say, and that's not what it actually says. So. I don't know, Scott, what do you think about?
Yeah, no, I was looking, I was, I was stuck when I was reading through this and trying to what they were getting at and your explanation really helped. I think, I think it's a matter of. And I understand where they're coming from now. It's the, the definitions and the terminologies are creating the problem. The actual. Prohibition in this section isn't the issue. It's that because the terminologies are so close and not properly. Defined that we're getting that confusion that what you're saying should be allowed to happen on occasion gets to, um, you know, evaluated, determined. Um, that it can't happen. So it might be a better way to, A, fix the definition of front yard. And have a more clear reading definition of required front yards with regard to this section and why it's in there.
It seems like he almost just changed the title to required front yards as opposed to front yards on, on the nine hundred twelve. You know, that's.
Yeah, that's probably one of the ways to go and. I think there's a better way to also, you know, define out better throughout the ordinance of required front yard and what we're talking about there as well.
Now, I think we should refer this back to them or do you guys, do we should we refer it to the legal? Because it gets expensive to refer it to legal.
Yes, it does. But I was hoping that we could include Gary because Gary.
Yeah.
He had a clear understand, has a clear understanding of this. I believe he helped with explanations towards this. So. I was hoping that we could get some information from him if, if possible and then have legal. Put something together of, of John.
Maybe I can talk to Gary first and see if we can figure out something simple the planning commission can do or we can just do without finding commission input. Um, cause he had trouble with the front yard definition too. This is kind of awkward the way it reads and he, he, since he has. Since he does work in other townships and we can see what other townships do and what their definition is and maybe we can get to come to some, before we involve. Legal.
Sure. And, and that's what I was proposing that.
Okay.
You would like, like to work with Gary and then help with something and then.
Yeah, it shouldn't be too.
Bring Scott at that point and then Scott can help with.
Yeah, no, I would, I would think that's the way to go. Yeah, this is more of a, this is more of a purely policy issue really. And yeah, Gary would be the better person to start with versus. Myself, so.
Thanks for reminding me that. I went to mention that we should go to Gary.
So.
Thought this is John.
So we're tab, are we tabling this item?
I would, they should table.
Okay, so I'm tabling um, action item number two. Number three is consideration of. Um, the installation and maintenance agreement and easement for an on lot sanitary sewer system. At twenty one Tedmer Road, T M P number four, four dash zero, one, five dash zero, zero, six. Scott?
Yeah, this is just, I think this is the, I think this is the last step in this project where they're, um, they're constructing their accessory dwelling. It's our standard form for the uh, operations and maintenance agreement that, you know, they're going to take care of it. Make sure their, their sec system continues to work. In the event it fails and they don't repair it. That's where we get the easement to make sure the repairs are done properly. Um, everything's in order. I believe all the fees have been paid. And it's good for your action.
Okay, is there a motion?
I also move second.
Any discussion, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four is consideration to ask our solicitor and or our zoning officer to attend the hearing of C H B. Number twenty twenty five dash zero, seven. Um, an application in connection with one forty five E Star Dark Hollow Road. T M P four, four dash zero, one, four dash one, oh, one, seeking a variance. From section four oh one point three regarding impervious coverage to install a storage shed. Three hundred thirty six square feet. Um, and this zoning hearing board meeting words hearing is set for December eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Three hundred thirty six square foot storage shed?
That is, that was the application, yes.
The big storage shed, yeah, it's, it's like the size of a single car garage.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we send the, the, the attorney, but I certainly would like to send a letter in opposition. I know it sounds like a small amount, maybe petty. But we end up with, okay, now it's eleven point five two and then they come in, they want to do something else, put a swimming pool in, now it's going to be twelve point two five and it's like, you know, what? When do we say no? So I think at some point we have to. Considering the fact also that they went over impervious surface coverage already with an unpermitted patio construction. So. I, 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 I'm inclined to send a letter at least in opposition.
So. I agree with not sending the solicitor for this, but you also don't want to send the zoning officer.
I don't know that. Well, I didn't tell you to send to say that.
You're starting with a letter.
Yeah, I think we should send a letter from the township.
I do know that the zoning hearing board has asked if we could be sending the. Uh, zoning officer to the hearings and of course that's up to the border supervisor. If that, if that's your choice, but I do know that they've, they've asked.
Comes out of escrow, right?
It does.
Okay.
Or no, not for Gary.
Not for Gary.
Not for, not, not for zoning here.
Okay, um.
Now, knows we need to send Gary this because uh, the number three reason. That you can't give a variance is the applicant must not have caused the hardship.
Well, there's that and it's whether. You know, he can't use his property without the shed for what it's intended. That's what the hardship really, the hardship clause really is about. Is that you, you know, you, you have to have this or you can't use the property as it's intended. He already has a three car garage there and around a large home. And um, you know, he can use it for what it's intended. Without another basically single car garage being part of the property.
Yeah, it does not meet any of the criteria for a variance, so.
Well, we're not the zoning hearing board.
Yeah, that's.
Judith, is there any other hearing on December eleventh?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay.
The other two you're consider, the other two you're considering are scheduled for. January eighth and I believe they have a special meeting for the continuation of the. Winery's zoning hearing board. I think that's December fourth.
Okay, we just, we just received.
Fourth, I guess, yeah.
We just received a schedule late this afternoon. With confirmed dates. Bear with me. Uh, so December fourth is Sandcastle, December eleventh, Apgar.
That's this one.
This one, January eighth and January twenty second. See here.
So is there a motion?
Well. The zoning hearing board has requested Gary to go.
Uh, they've asked if the zoning officer could attend more of the meetings because they feel it's advantageous for them. If they have questions that they can ask him when he's present. Um, that's, and, and that's not usually. Why you send a zoning officer? Usually you send a zoning officer if you're in opposition. Um, so again, it's really up to the board of supervisors. Because they do have the application.
Yeah, I have the application. They have a, a letter from the zoning officer, right? They thought I saw that in here somewhere.
Yes.
Yes.
They have an engineers, the engineers do anything for us on this one or not?
No, not on that.
And their justification for the variance is de minimis.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, good. The more impervious you allow this, then the next three hundred and thirty square foot thing is even less. And it's more de minimis, but it's still three hundred and thirty square, square feet. Say, can we get death by a thousand cuts if you keep doing this?
Yeah.
So at some point I have to say no, and this is the point I think is say no. So I would make a motion that we send a letter of opposition to the borders, to the zoning hearing board stating the townships. Would like them to deny the variance.
I'll second that.
Is that the way we word that, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
But we are not sending the zoning officer nor the solicitor. Am I correct?
Not in the motion, so no.
Yes, okay, now I just.
Okay.
Just to declare.
You seconded. Any discussion? I'll just say the zoning hearing board has asked for the zoning officer.
Hmm.
Um, I would be inclined to have, to have him go. If we are opposing this.
I can amend the motion then. Well, I'm in the motion to include the zoning officer and I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Next is consideration to send our solicitor and or the zoning officer to the hearing. On zoning hearing board application number twenty twenty five dash eight for one oh two Ridge Valley Road, T M P four, four dash zero, one, four. Dash four, one dash zero, zero, one. Um, for a zoning determination as to whether an, an animal rescue is considered a kennel. Um, with the property located in the residential agricultural zoning district. Um, and a size of two acres. They have submitted an extension waiver. Um, is that correct?
Yeah, we received the extension waiver, so this will be heard on. January eighth, twenty twenty six.
Okay.
So for history, Judith. This became an issue when we received the complaint from a neighbor? That when this all started, you know, did you say this is?
That, that's correct. There's a.
Can't say who we received a complaint from, but.
Oh, we received a complaint.
We received a complaint, correct.
Well, yeah, we were, the township received incomplete, uh, notice a violation was issued.
Yes.
I believe they appealed that originally.
Yes, they did.
But didn't want, or they, or no, he didn't appeal it. He asked for a variance. And now they submitted a zoning determination request and that's what they're appealing now because obviously. The variance was not going to be granted, which you opposed at the time as well. So at this point, it's more of a, a legal argument. With regard to the definition of kennel, the kennel use.
So then Scott, would it be more appropriate, more appropriate for the solicitor to go?
Yes, in this case, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved, send the solicitor to the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Any discussion, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six is consideration to send the solicitor and or the zoning officer to the hearing of zoning hearing board application number. Twenty twenty five dash zero, nine. Um, relating to twenty six Red Cliff Road for an accessory structure proposed within the rear yard setback. With steep slopes and a zoning hearing board date to be determined.
So I didn't see this till I got here today.
Yeah, I didn't see this in the packet either.
No, it just came in today.
Red, I thought Red Cliff related to a pool.
Yes, it is.
Pool and shed.
Okay.
I think Gary just went out today on it.
Is there a hearing date?
Um, it sounded like it got moved, but I believe it was January eighth when I lost that, talked to Gary. But I believe they were also sending the extension letter, so that one might have gotten moved. I think that was the one that got moved to January twenty second.
Okay, so do we want to, do we have to deal with this tonight or can we review this and, and address it in December?
I would say, yeah, you have time, you, you definitely have time to table this one.
All right. Number six is tabled. Number seven is consideration to approve and advertise the draft Township twenty twenty six public meeting schedule. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, um. Any discussion, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight is consideration of resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty five, supporting Pennsylvania House Bill eleven fifty two. Requiring insurance companies to directly reimburse emergency medical service providers. For services rendered to Commonwealth residents.
If this is, um. This is something that's probably pretty very important. It gets passed because what happens now is when you get an ambulance service. Insurance companies very often will reimburse you for that service. And the EMS never gets any money at all because people get their check. From the insurance company and decide to bank it, keep it, spend it or whatever, and they never get the money to the EMS service. Then the EMS service is saddled with. The task of getting the money from people. So this makes it such that. These, these checks will go directly to the EMS and we don't, they don't get involved in any kind of, uh, you know, collection agency or anything like that. So it'll help EMS services in getting paid. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of it.
It was consistent complaint that the EMS providers that we had talked with had.
All of them, all of them said. So unless you have a, an operation like a Saint Luke's that has a whole collection agency for everything else under their own roof. It gets expensive and you end up losing capital that you collect. So this is important for EMS services to be able to stay afloat financially.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, draft a resolution supporting House Bill one eleven fifty two.
I think we have the resolution. It's already drafted. Do we want to adopt it?
Yes.
Yes, and I'd like to second that.
Okay, um, so I'll just note that I did reach out to the chief at Point Pleasant and they would. You know, they're in favor of the resolution. They would leverage be eleven fifty two to be passed. Um, it's been in a, in a committee since April of this year, hopefully, it'll move forward.
Hopefully has been. Just knowing that municipal, other municipalities representing, we've been talking about this since August. Hopefully has sort of been unfortunately waiting off. So hopefully the continued growth among the municipalities will push it forward, but it has. You know, the last report we got is, it has stalled in the committee and there isn't a lot of push behind it right now.
Yeah, it does have strong bipartisan support, um, but. I mean, I, I think it's appropriate for us to be expressing our support of it.
I do too.
So any further discussion here? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine is consideration to adopt and advertise the draft resolution seventeen, twenty twenty five. For the twenty twenty six Tinnicum Township fee schedule.
Everything's going up, um. Around us, we need to kind of keep pay pace with, you know, our expenses and one way we do that is by periodically upping our fees.
Yes.
It's necessary for us to do and I'd like to make a motion to.
Okay.
Um, adopt the draft, uh. Resolution.
Second.
Right. And Judith, these fees, um, reflect information that you've received from our professionals who provide services?
Yes.
And our vendors, okay.
Correct. And, and we also, um, I had Kathy. Look at other websites with some surrounding municipalities to see, you know, where we are. Um, with our fee schedules. And what we noticed was that our escrow account requirements. Um, were very low, so maybe a thousand dollars and most places are twenty five hundred to, to five thousand. So by not having those escrow accounts, um, at a higher level. to five thousand. So by not having those escrow accounts, um, at a higher level, our staff is continually sending out invoices requesting for more funds. So that was really one of the major items that we did increase. Um, uh, there, there was not a lot of the increases, to be quite honest with you. It was more, um, just putting some things more in line
Yeah.
with what it really should be. And the escrow accounts, the application fee did go up. Um, so that we feel is, is necessary and other municipalities are uh, as high as where we are going to be. So that's how we really came up with some of the fees. And then also what we're spending, what we're spending to be able to, um, have the applications come in, be reviewed, um, and, and be uh, worked on and, and then of course, get to the end of, you know, from the beginning to the end, what the time that we're taking and the cost that it costs. So we're not making any money. It's not about.
Of course.
It's really about, um, paying for what it's costing.
Covering the expenses.
Yes, and I wanted to just make that clear.
Okay.
We don't ever make any money.
No.
We always lose money.
And if there's any funds remaining in the escrow, it's returned.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, any further discussion, any comment, all in favor?
Aye.
Number ten is consideration of the memorandum of understanding um, of the Tinicum Regional Police Department. Not sure why it says that. The Tinicum Township Police Department and the County of Bucks Human Services Division and Human Services Co-Responder Initiative. So this was um, this co-responder program, what Tinicum signed the original M O U in February of twenty twenty three, I believe. Um, and Chief, I actually had a question on this one because just pulling up my notes. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
What's the, um?
I believe it's twenty twenty three as a start and the end is twenty six.
Right, so this, our existing M O U does not expire until the end of twenty twenty six according to the document that was in our board packet. So I'm wondering why we're why this is on our agenda.
I, I do believe what they did was they made some changes and I think that one of the the changes that they did make was because at one point the responsibility to pay for this was on the townships at a certain year.
Mm-hmm.
And they wanted to make sure that the grant funding that they were providing was going to cover this through twenty twenty six. So I'm not sure if that was the full, I don't believe it was the full reason, uh, but I'm not sure what the other reasons were. Do you know, Chief?
I didn't realize it was signed through twenty twenty six.
Yeah. So can we table this and then if we need to act on it before the end of the year, we'll do it? So. Okay, so do we have the new M O U, maybe?
Yes.
Do you need to come up here? I didn't see the new M O U in the packet. I only saw the one that we had executed.
We did provide it. May have been in a, a, a previous drop.
I sent that?
Yes, a month ago.
Okay.
So I think it was in a previous drop.
The changes would have been, is that the second page?
Yes.
Page two under funding, yeah, that is different, that's different language than
Yes.
what it had always been.
Have you reviewed this too, Scott?
Yes, um. So yeah, so it looks like, yeah, the change, the changes around when they first started this, they only had a grant, they only had grant funding for a specific time period.
Yeah.
More and more of the municipalities that got on, they've been able to secure more funding and because it's been so successful. And that's the change I've noticed. That's the only change I've noticed in this is that they are, um, yeah.
So is it page four under independent contractor? It's that language?
I don't know, this is page two. Since the term has always been the same. I mean, this is the, this is the new one. So I wonder if the term, I haven't seen the original. I've only seen this new one.
Mm-hmm.
So I wonder if they're extending it a year as well. But if you, on page two, the funding section.
Um, I don't see that on what I'm looking at.
Top of pit, top of the page.
Oh, it's covered.
So that paragraph.
Okay.
Initially, it was either a two or three year period where it would have said the division, this, the division had the grant funding. They would supply it and now it's saying they'll do it for the entire period. Excuse me.
And Scott, that was what I had.
Yeah, other than that, there, yeah, there wasn't much change to it.
Okay. That works for me. And it has been successful, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, great. Um, we're lucky they got more funding. Is there a motion?
I also move.
Second.
Any further discussion, any comment, all in favor?
Aye.
We're at our second round of public comment. Hearing none. Any supervisor comments?
Uh, just a couple of things I would take to the planning commission. I don't know if, um, don't think I'm any objection this. Um, it's been noted that our, our noise ordinance could probably be stiffened up a little bit to get it a little closer to Solbury's. For instance, there are a lot of townships now that have sustained noise mentioned in their ordinances. So, um, I would like to put that in the hands of planning commission to research and come up with perhaps some changes to our noise ordinance to make it a little bit more enforceable, I guess is the best way to put it. Um, and the other thing is that, uh, we have something like critical recharge change and Scott, I don't know if we can do this. The critical recharge, um, has language in it that says total lot area. Whereas most of the time our, our ordinance is saying, um, net lot area. And is it, are we able to change that to net lot area for critical recharge?
I think, can we change it? Most likely, but I would think we would want to look and know why it was written the way it was.
Initially, yeah. Wasn't around.
Well, I was, yeah, if there was a reason or just something that just never got, you know, one of those, it just never got changed.
Yeah, because everything else is sort of into, into net lot area. Which of course takes out your frontage, your setbacks and your, and your right of ways and things like that that are on your property. Well, we ran into this issue a little bit. There was property up on, um, an Everbreeze, that Everbreeze neighborhood up there that they, see, I don't know about this because they came in with, um, they have like a drainage swell goes to their property. And that was removed from their their property, you know, their, their, uh, their
Nate Bridge.
Yeah. Because their net lot area, because it was a right of way that, that is established that they so I haven't, I'm emboldened, I'm not embellishing, but I'm toss up about it because something like that, you know, it's like, well, that's not.
And that's where the, where I was kind of going to, yeah, there's some things that probably could be removed, but like it's all their stuff that comes out of that net lot area include natural resources where you think even though it's not buildable.
Steep slopes.
Yeah, things like that, yeah, things like that that come out that they're not buildable, but you know, do you want to punish homeowners for having those, you know, having those.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that. I didn't look at that as close as I should have before the meeting. So take a look at that and we'll maybe talk about it next, next meeting in December.
Okay.
It shouldn't be a long conversation, just, you know, this is what it says and what it means.
Sounds good.
That's it.
Okay.
Um, other than, oh, thank you again for the Parks and Rec.
Yes.
Parks and Rec seems to be moving a little more energized. You're going to these meetings now, you're seeing what's going on. Oh, sorry about that. Um, so I mean, Parks and Rec to me is, uh, going to become a more important because we are getting more young crowd into this township. We don't know it so much because everybody says, well, the school registrations are down, but I think a lot of people are either homeschooling, we're going private school. But when I was going about around on twenty twenty three, I noticed, I don't know if you noticed it this year, there's more young people out there than I thought there would be. So Parks and Rec can become more important and I think that's a very.
Driving the engagement as they are, that's something that's very important for a community. We're rural, but we need to remember their people here and we all live here together. We're all part of the same thing.
Well, I've said this before, I'll say it again until it gets home. This is, uh, when I look at definitions of what areas are, this is less rural now than we'd be considered ex-urban in nature, which is an area that is between big metropolitan areas. It's not, it's, it's got low density population, but it's not rural in a sense that it's farmland and, and things like that. It's, it are people, it's more residential. But it's widespread out residential, big properties. That's what ex-urban is considered these days. And I think that's where we sit right now. It's not so much rural, but ex-urban. Very close. I mean, the characteristics of the pri, of the land is the same. But the people who are living there are different. No longer farmers, they're more younger people that are highly educated professionals. That's what I found going around in twenty twenty three. So that might have changed since twenty twenty one when you went around, I don't know. Anyway, it's just a little.
Yep.
Thing, I, I like what's going on with Parks and Rec. I'd like to see that park up there become a more vital community center than it is right now. Like it's considered changing the name so it doesn't be confused with the one down at the river. Let's talk about that too one of these days. A more imaginative name than that.
Good ideas.
Yeah, okay, that's it.
Only thing I have is thank you to the Parks and Rec Mission for a very successful trunk or treat and getting everything in place for the holiday event. Uh, I think this is a great direction, uh, for them to be heading and very proud of the events, event that they had. I'm sure the next one holiday event will be terrific.
I too wanted to thank Park and Rec for the trunk or treat. Um, it was the third annual, I think, and is that right?
That's correct.
And, um, and they put this one together on a pretty short timeline and I think it was very successful. It's also, um, exciting to see another event in the park, um, in two weeks' time. So
Yeah.
the holiday tree lighting. I also wanted to thank, um, the Public Works Department. They've been doing a really great job on our township roads. Um, it was a couple of weekends ago, I was driving early on a Sunday down Perry Auger and um, there were two cyclists in front of me, kind of hugging the shoulder. And I noticed, um, a pothole that they missed. They didn't, you know, fortunate, fortunately didn't go into it, but I let Judith know and I think I think the very next day it was filled.
Yes.
Um, so, um, that is, that is excellent. And the, I've also noticed that throughout the township, they've been kind of repairing the shoulders where previous roadway had kind of collapsed into the, um, what do you call that?
The ditch.
The ditch. Um, and I also wanted to just note or kind of bring up for conversation in the planning commission's minutes from September ninth. Um, there was discussion once again about the need to update the comprehensive plan, which municipalities are required to do every ten years. Um, and it's a big undertaking for any municipality to do that. Some municipalities, um, who have the budget will hire, um, planners to do that project. Um, but Tinicum is not in a position to do that. And I think that that's okay. I mean, we don't have tremendous changes happening here in the township. Um, nonetheless, it is still a big undertaking. And I think it is too much to ask our planning commission to do on top of all the work that they're normally doing. But in their September meeting, they again discussed the, the needed update and they raised as a question or a suggestion, um, that the Board of Supervisors consider establishing a comprehensive plan update committee. Um, possibly to be comprised of residents who participated in drafting the planning, uh, the comprehensive plan ten years ago. Um, I think that's a, a good idea. Um, whether we can have those same residents participate or other residents who are familiar with the ordinances that we have. Um, so putting that out there because I think the clock is ticking on our needed update.
I think that's a good idea.
Any discussion here?
I believe that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know how many people in the front of that book are still around. I know I'm one of them.
That was my next question.
Yeah. I know I'm one of them. Marty Kite is still around and then she was on there. Damon Hayer Hearn was on there. Have to look to see, but, um, you know, a lot of us have moved, one way or the other, unfortunately.
I do think we definitely need, need to give planning commission some help.
Yes.
Very nice, some direction at very least.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the addition of a volunteer committee to help steer this would be an excellent idea because it is a daunting undertaking.
Yeah.
Planning commission has quite a bit before it already.
Gee whiz, Mike, you're gonna have some time next year.
So let's think about that and try to figure out
So.
the path, or can we just act on that? Can we go forward with that?
Yeah, you don't need to, yeah, we can move forward with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll move forward with that. Give them help.
Yeah, to reiterate, it, it, when it was done before, it was a community effort. There was, there's gotta be twenty names in the front of that book that were. And, um, it was such a community effort that, yeah, I mean, I could see the planning commission saying, let's go ahead and get the community involved again. Which makes sense.
Yes, I know they reached out to me and I had said I thought it was a good idea for even them to reach out to some of the persons that they wanted to that had been involved in creating the, you know, the book
Mm-hmm.
um, and the plan in prior times. And I said, I, I didn't think that anybody would have an issue with that. I thought that even inviting them to the planning commission meeting, even if there wasn't time to have a committee put together, just inviting them and having collaboration at the P C meeting could be helpful for the planning commission. So I thought maybe they were going to act in that manner.
I think it would be helpful if a member of the board here reached out to um, some of those drafters of the, the existing comprehensive plan.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, so we can
Okay.
look at that list and divvy it up.
Okay.
That's no good.
It works.
Okay.
So the board.
And, and then the issue of finding a searchable, editable document, because right now we only have the comprehensive plan and PDF. Can't we just convert it?
We do have, we do have an editable version.
Okay.
Although it's too large to email. So we're trying to figure out different things to do with that as to how or who, because that's the other thing. Do we provide that to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Um, or do we provide it to one person that would be in charge of making the edits? What, what's, I don't know what the game plan was in the past. Um, you know, and, and how it was handled. So it's, it, that's an item that I'm trying to.
Okay, we can talk about that.
I don't agree that how that was done.
The P C was considering doing it in an online version, like a Google Docs or something, where they could kind of collaboratively edit it. And I thought that sounded like it made a bunch of sense.
Does.
So if we could have that ability.
That's kind of the way it was done before.
Yeah.
But I don't remember who was the monitor of all that, because somebody has to be.
Well, that's what I was wondering. I wanted to be able to know who would be the monitor, who would make the changes. Will we give it to one person? Because if we give it too many, we could end up with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sixteen different versions.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, need somebody to have kind of the master.
Yes, yes, so we're, we're.
There are ways to do it where it's like a, like a dynamic document and people can make suggested change and suggest it edits and then one person could be the one accepting them, but we can sort this out.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you can change the permissions on a Google Doc where you can make one person able to edit and everybody else able to view.
Or suggest.
Yep. Okay. Terrific.
We looking for motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, yes.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, so the board will be checked out.
Yeah, I gotta find my, I gotta look.
Yeah, we have.
This is for the tyranny thing.
Ah.
Let me get that moving.
Well, thank you.
How's it going?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I think.